Honorable Roberto Espirito II, Honorable J.B. Hison, Honorable Ricardo Boy Isip Jr., Honorable Charri Ortega, Honorable Raymundo Yupanco, Under 6th District Honorable Benny Paga Banded III, Honorable Carlos Castañeda, Honorable Salvador Philippe Lacuna, Honorable Elmer Parr, Honorable Luis Uy, Honorable Luciano Beloso, Ex-officio members, Honorable Lailani Mari Lacuna, and Honorable Daniel Dave Tan.
Your Honor, as of 9:23 in the morning, we have now 20 councilors present on this 47th regular session.
We have 20 councilors present in this regular session. With that, we have a quorum.
Your Honor, we are now on item number 7. Item number 7 is the reading and approval of the minutes of regular session held on March 14, 2023. I move that we dispense with the reading of the said minutes.
There's a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the regular session held on March 14, 2023. With that, we have... Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
I move, Your Honor, that we approve the said minutes.
There's a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session held on March 14, 2023. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
We are now on item number 8. Item number 8 is business for today. May I ask our secretary to read all items under item number 8?
Mr. Secretary.
Item number 1 for first reading, a letter from Barangay Anna Janina D. Santiago of Barangay 886, Zone 98, District 6, Manila, relative to the barangay resolution number 4, Series of 2023, entitled "A Resolution Specifically Designating Silang and Begonha Streets as One Way Roads in the barangay", requesting for its review as per basic papers.
I move, Your Honor, that we refer item number 1 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There's a motion to refer item number 1 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Item number 2, a complaint letter, Barangay Kagawad Mary Lucy Artquero against Punong barangay Daniel M. Sabater, both of barangay 856, Zone 93, District 6, Manila, for appropriate action as per basic papers.
I move, Your Honor, to refer item number 2 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There's a motion to refer item number 2 to the barangay affairs. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Item number 3, the hearing endorsement of Attorney Pilarita Tilapitan, Assistant Ombudsman proper, Office of the Ombudsman, Central Records Division, Agham Road, Delimanqueson City, relative to the complaint of Miss Barbara M. Kimbaw against Punong barangay Epifanio R. Paragas of barangay 643, Zone 66, District 6, Manila, for appropriate action as per basic papers.
I move, Your Honor, that we refer item number 3 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There's a motion to refer item number 3 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
And item number 4, a sworn statement of the members of the Senior Citizens Association of barangay 856 against Punong barangay Daniel M. Sabater of the same barangay, Zone 93, District 6, Manila, for appropriate action as per basic papers.
I move, Your Honor, that we refer item number 4 to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There's a motion... There's a motion to refer item number 4 to the Committee on barangay affairs. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
We are now on item number 5. Item number 5 is draft ordinance number 8406. It is for second reading. The Chairman of the Committee on Family Relations, Moral Recovery and Youth Values, Formation Development, Honorable Daniel Dave Tan is absent today's session. I move that we defer action on item number 5.
There's a motion to defer action on the said ordinance. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
We are now on item number 6, unfinished business. Item number 6 is for second reading. The Committee on Justice and Human Rights and Barangay Affairs have rendered their committee report. I move that we adopt the joint report of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights and Barangay Affairs.
There's a motion to adopt the committee report of the said letters. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
I move, Your Honor, that we open the period of discussion debate.
There's a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
May I seek recognition of the Chairman of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights, Honorable Rod Laxamana.
Councilor Rod Laxamana is now recognized.
Lapay.
Councilor Rod Laxamana.
Thank you, Madam President. Second reading. Actually, Your Honor, this proposed ordinance by the barangay number 731, Zone 80, District 5, was referred to my committee since... It is clearly said in the proposed ordinance that they are actually violating some human rights of the inhabitants of the said barangay, Your Honor. So it was referred also to the... to our legal department so they can finally decide on the legality of this said being passed ordinance, Your Honor. So I don't know what happened to... Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madjo.
Your Honor, by virtue of the manifestation of Honorable Rod Laxamana, may we ask our secretary to please read the legal opinion of the city legal officer.
Mr. Secretary.
For Attorney Ernesto C. Isip Jr., my majority floor leader, Councilor 3rd District Manila from the City Legal Office regarding barangay ordinance number 006 of barangay 731, Zone 80, District 5, Manila, dated March 29, 2023. Roman numeral 1, background: This office received a letter dated March 16, 2023 from the Office of Councilor Attorney Ernesto C. Isip Jr., requesting this office's legal opinion and recommendation with respect to the attached barangay ordinance number 006 of barangay 731, Zone 80, District 5, Manila. Roman numeral 2, comments, recommendation: Upon review of the subject barangay ordinance, this office is of the opinion that the same infringes on the constitutional right to liberty of abode as well as the statutory rights of ownership. Section 6, Article 3 of the 1987 Constitution provides that one's liberty of abode cannot be impaired except upon lawful order of the court. It states, Section 6, "The liberty of abode and of changing the same within the limits prescribed by law shall not be impaired except upon lawful order of the court; neither shall the right to travel be impaired except in the interests of national security, public safety, or public health as may be provided by law." Likewise, the right to liberty of abode is also protected under the Universal Declaration of Human Rights to which the Philippines is a signatory. Article 13 thereof provides, "Everyone has the right to freedom of movement and residence within the borders of each state. Everyone has the right to leave any country, including his own, and to return to his country." Barangay ordinance number 6 prohibits its residents who owns, operates, and/or administers private property to accept new tenants, occupants, or transient borders without first securing a certificate of good moral character from the place or barangay of origin. In essence, all persons who wish to transfer or relocate to barangay 731 either temporarily or permanent in nature cannot do so unless and until he or she has been issued the required certification. This clearly impairs a person's right to choose one's residence. Further, the subject barangay ordinance imposes an unnecessary burden and likewise impairs the attributes of ownership under our laws when it prohibits owners, administrators, or operators of private properties to allow new tenants, occupants, or borrowers who does not have a certificate of good moral character from the originating barangay. Article 48 of the Civil Code provides, "The owner has the right to enjoy and dispose of a thing without other limitations than those established by law." Clearly, therefore, the barangay cannot impose limitations not found in the law over one's right to enjoy the thing he owns. This includes the property owner's right to sell or to lease out his property to anyone he deems fit. This is a private matter. The right over the same is granted by our statutory laws and over which the barangay doesn't have the power and authority to curtail. Therefore, barangay ordinance number 6 cannot and shall not be approved for infringing on one's constitutional right to liberty of abode as well as the statutory rights of ownership. For your information and guidance, sign, Veronica Nakpilyado, City Legal Officer.
Councilor Rod Laxamana is now recognized.
Ah, maliwanag naman po ang paliwanag ng legal department natin na talagang it's really violating the human rights of the tenants or especially those people who would like to reside doon sa barangay 731, Zone 80, and District 5. Ah, sa pagpapaliwanag po, clearly, makikita naman po nila, self-explanatory naman 'yung niirequire... ginawa nilang batas. Sa batas po kasing ginawa nila doon sa kanilang barangay, ay ah, pinuprohibit nila 'yung mga residente nila, ah, lalo na doon sa commercial owner, na kailangan pa ho sa kanila na humingi sila ng good moral character sa pinagmulan nilang lugar para makapunta ka doon sa makapag-stay ka sa barangay nila. So ah, nacommittee report naman po namin yan, na nakipag-usap po ako sa ating Ah, Conseal Ley Lacuna. At sinabi ko rin naman po, pareho lang naman po kami ng opinion. At ah, ang finality nga po ay nabigay namin, naendorse namin sa legal department. At ah, with your indulgence, Your Honor, siguro po mapapaliwanag ni Attorney Majority Floor Leader kung paano ang tamang aksyon natin sa pag hindi pag-aproba. Nagpapasa na pinapasa ng 731 barangay at ng Zone 80, District 5. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, just to add up to what Honorable Laxamana has said, ah, if we approve this barangay ordinance, it will set a bad precedent in the city of Manila as it will unduly burden the tenants who are willing to relocate to the city of Manila for job purposes or for students who want to study in the universities and schools in the city of Manila. As I said and as mentioned by the city legal officer, this is a clear violation of Article 3, Section 6 of the 1987 Constitution, which guarantees the liberty of abode and of changing the same. And it shall not be impaired unless there is a lawful order of the court. So ito pong ginagawa po ni Punong barangay Ariel Dakis ang barangay 731, Zone 80, District 5, Manila, ay parang siya na po ang nanguhusga o nagiging ah... nagiging ah, judge without judgment, without due process. At hinuhusgahan niya po 'yung ah, tenants or occupants or transient border kung saan pag hindi po sila nakakuha ng certificate of good moral character, automatically may presumption of bad faith at hindi po nila papiyagan ito na manirahan doon po sa kanilang barangay. So ako po sumasang-ayon sa opinion po ng ating Chairman of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights, Honorable Laxamana, at doon po sa legal opinion ni ating City Legal Attorney Veronica Nakpilyado. Your Honor, may I seek recognition of Honorable Lou Beloso.
Councilor Lou Beloso is recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ah, wala po akong objection kaya lang ah... siguro po ay mapaalahanan natin ang ating mga barangay na talaga pong kailangan mag-ingat sa mga dumadayo kung hindi nila kakilala sa mga lugar ng ating mga barangay dahil kumakalat po ang mga talagang illegal ah... paggamit sa mga bahay o condominiums na pinaglalaga ka ng mga droga o kaya ng mga ah, cyber crimes, mga pornography ng ating mga kabataan. Ah, talaga po dapat ay maging aware sila sa mga nangyayaring ito at marami tayong nababalitaan, lalo na sa paggamit ng mga condominium, mga ibang foreigners na dumadayo sa ating lugar. Ay kailangan pong talagang religiously meron tayong pagbabantay dahil nagagamit minsan ang ating mga barangay at ating mga tahanan. So I guess tama naman po 'yung sinasabi ng ating legal office, but aware lang po tayo dapat sa mga dumadayo ngayon sa ating mga lugar. 'Yun lamang po, ginuntag po mo.
One minute recessed, take the debate chair.
Ngayong gabing ito, ay inilawan natin ang pangalawang bahagi ng napakahabang A.H. Laxson. Huli po.
Councilor Rod Laxamana is recognized.
Thank you po. Ah, tama po 'yung ah, sinasabi ni Conseal ah... Conseal Beloso. Na sana po 'yung mga barangay chairman natin ay mag-ingat po sa paggawa din ng mga batas na hindi lamang sa kapakanan ng kanilang mga residente. Sa tutuwo po, way back 2011, ako po ay nagawa ng isang batas na ordinanasa. Karamihan po kasi ng nagva-violate sa atin, ang sinabi, binabanggit nga po ninyo sa mga drugs trafficking sa lungsod ng Maynila ay hindi naman po mga lokal na Pilipino o native Filipino. Karamihan po sa nababas ng ating mga law enforcement agencies ay mga foreigner. Kaya po nagugulat na lamang sila, ito ay nandoon sa loob ng isang napakamahal na condominium o mga hotels na nakakapaglagay doon ng higit sa isang buwan. Sa tutuwo po, 'yung ordinasang ifinal ko noon ay hindi naman naaproban dahil maraming ah, tumututol ay para doon sa mga foreigners na nag-i-stay po dito sa atin ng more than 30 days. Sana po noon ay hinihiling ko na sana sila ay magbigay sa atin sa lokal na pamahalaan ng siyudad ng Maynila ng kanilang ah, legal ID para sa lugar na paghihingpila nila o pag-i-stayan nila na hotel o mga condominiums. Lamang po ito ay hindi naipasa dahil sa parang maraming umaangal na mga foreigners na mag-i-stay sa atin. Kasi niirequire ka po silang kumuha sila ng valid ID sa City Hall na sila ay mag-i-stay dito sa Maynila ng more than 30 days. Nagugulat lang po tayo, dalawang linggo, tatlong linggo na naninirahan sila dito sa lungsod ng Maynila, ay bigla na lamang po magkakahulihan at maraming drugs na involved. Ah, ito po sana, iniisip po dati na makakatulong kung paano masusubaybayan at malalaman ang mga barangay chairmans kung sino ang kanilang mga tenants o residente na naninirahan sa mga nasasakupa nilang ah, business establishment, condominiums, or hotels. Lamang po ay hindi nga po napasa. Ah, 'yun lamang po, kung sa tutuwo ay hihilingin natin na sila ay magkoroo ng ah, impormasyon doon sa barangay, ay magagawa naman po ng barangay. Pumunta lamang po sila doon sa frontes at alami nila kung sino 'yung mga foreigners o mga dayuhan na naninirahan sa lugar nila at hindi naman siguro sila ah, pipigilan o payihindian ng mga security officers ah, para malaman kung sino po 'yung mga naninirahan sa kanilang lugar. 'Yun lamang po, maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Councilor Rod Laxamana. May ano pa po bang nais magsalita? Councilor Makilaxson is recognized.
Meron ba? Ayon. Ah, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Ah, ako rin po naging punong barangay ng mahabang panahon sa aming lugar. At ah, ang feeling ko po rito sa ah, resolution or dinasang ito ay medyo opo kasi parang ito ay pagihimasok sa mga nagnene-gosyo kung ah, sino 'yung pipiliin nila na patitirahin. Eh, pwede rin po kasi ito maging subject for abuse ng mga barangay official pagka 'yung taong gustong tumira ay kaaway pala nila. Pag di nila nabigyan ng certificate, hindi na pwedeng tumira. And besides, 'yung paghingi po kasi ng ano, it's ironic na 'yung paghingi ng certificate of good moral eh, paano mabibigyan ng isang grupo na papasok bilang tenants? Eh, first time nga nilang titira roon. Anong pagkakilanlan para mabigyan sila ng good moral? So isang basihang po 'yun. And besides, my point being, 'yung mga may-ari po, hindi po natin dapat panghimasukan kung paano nila pinatatakbo 'yung kanilang negosyo at meron naman regulasyon patungkol dito. Ngayon, ah, I take ah, I recognize 'yung concern ng mga ibang tao tungkol doon sa mga drugs, pero 'yung po ay trabaho ng barangay. Ang pinakamaganda po sigurong gawin ng mga barangayan eh, bago pumasok 'yung mga tenants, pwede nilang i-regulate. I-regulate lang na, i-re-register lang kung sino 'yung mga titira. Pero 'yung kung, kung ah, paano nila iparirentahan 'yun, mali naman 'yung pakihimasok na po natin 'yun. So kahit po minsan, nagtatalo kami ni Rod sa politika, dito po sinusupportahan ko po siya ngayon. Maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Councilor Makilaxson. Majority floor leader. With that, Your Honor, I move that we close the period of discussion debate. There is a motion to close the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I move, Your Honor, that we dispense with the period of amendments. There is a motion to dispense the period of amendments. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Your Honor, by virtue of the joint report of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights and Barangay Affairs and following the legal opinion of the City Legal dated March 31, 2023, I move, Your Honor, that we approve a resolution declaring as invalid a proposed barangay ordinance number 006 entitled "A barangay ordinance prohibiting the residential..." Ayaw mo? Motion to approve, to declare invalid. Parang ayaw po ni Attorney Anna. Parang gusto niya po may approve. Gusto may approve? Motion to approve a resolution declaring invalid proposed barangay ordinance number 006 entitled "Barangay ordinance prohibiting the residential and residential commercial property owner, operator, administrator to accept newly transferred tenants, occupants, transient border with a certificate of good moral character from the place of origin and providing space for tenants parking of vehicle, motorcycle, tricycle, and e-bike, subject to style." There is a motion by the majority floor leader to approve the resolution declaring invalid the said barangay resolution, barangay ordinance. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Your Honor, one minute recesses. One minute recessed, take the debate chair.
Ngayong gabing ito, ay inilawan natin ang pangalawang bahagi ng napakahabang A.H. Laxson. Huli po. Maraming, maraming salamat. Hindi po ito ang huli. Ang ako po namin sa inyo hangga't sa apot ng aming makakaya. Kaya nga po ng aking sinabi, liliwanag at liwanag ang buong kamay nila. Maraming salamat. Magandang gabi po sa inyo.
The next, Your Honor, is a resolution authorizing the city mayor, Honorable Maria Silahanila Kunapangan, MDFPDS, to enter into lease contracts with private entities the city-owned patrimonial properties composed of five commercial spaces inside the hospital ng Maynila Medical Center through public bidding in accordance with law to execute in all documents necessary or in furtherance thereto. I move, Your Honor, that we tackle on the floor said draft resolution. There is a motion by the majority floor leader to tackle the said draft resolution on the floor. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I move, Your Honor, to reopen the period of discussion debate. There is a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Your Honor, the city administrator and chairman of Patrimonial Property Committee, Honorable Secretary Bernardito Ang, requested for adoption of a resolution authorizing Honorable City Mayor to enter into a lease contract of identified city-owned patrimonial properties, which is composed of five commercial spaces located inside the hospital ng Maynila Medical Center. The following properties shall be awarded through public bidding in accordance with law. And during the period of amendments, I will suggest that the said lease contracts be submitted to the city council for ratification. So if there are no questions, I move that we close the period of discussion debate. There is a motion by the majority floor leader to close the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I move, Your Honor, that we open the period of amendments. There is a motion to open the period of amendments. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Your Honor, I propose to amend the restorative clause, the last paragraph, including the title, to include at the end of the paragraph that ah... and to submit the same for ratification to the city council. There is a motion, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Secretary. Mr. Secretary, please take note of the manifestation. With that, Your Honor, I move that we close the period of amendments. There is a motion to close the period of amendments. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I move, Your Honor, that we approve a resolution authorizing the city mayor, the Honorable Maria Silahanila Kunapangan, MDFPDS, to enter into lease contracts with private entities the city-owned patrimonial properties composed of five commercial spaces inside the hospital ng Maynila Medical Center through public bidding in accordance to law and to execute in all documents necessary or in furtherance thereto and to submit the same for ratification to the city council. There is a motion by the majority floor leader to approve a resolution authorizing the city mayor, the Honorable Maria Silahanila Kunapangan, MDFPDS, to enter into lease contract with private entities the city-owned patrimonial properties composed of five commercial spaces inside the hospital ng Maynila Medical Center through public bidding in accordance to law to execute any and all documents necessary or in furtherance thereto. As amended, is there any second to the motion? Seconded by Conseal Lesustaga Pardo Jr., Conseal Nino De La Cruz, Conseal Marjion Isidro, Conseal Dr. J. Benaventura, Conseal Ian Bansey-Nieba, Conseal Awisiya, Conseal Roma Robles, Conseal Makilaxson, Conseal La Aponyeto, Councilor Papugoso, Councilor Tol Salkal, Councilor Terence Alibarbar, Councilor Mayla Chenza, Councilor Attorney Chris Bacani, Councilor J.T. Bibilanueva, Councilor Charri Ortega, Councilor Attorney J.B. Hison, Councilor Doc Louis Chua, Councilor Bobby Espirito.
Councilor Kaloy Castinyeda, Councilor Philip Lacuna, Councilor Rodlak Samana, Councilor Fogamante, Councilor Elmer Par, Councilor Lu Biloso. Is there any objection? Hearing and the motion is approved.
The next, Your Honor, is an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee of the tourism enterprises establishments under the services of the city of Manila. I move, Your Honor, that we tackle on the floor for second reading said draft ordinance.
There is a motion by the majority floor leader to tackle on the floor the said draft ordinance on the floor. Is there any objection? Hearing and the motion is approved.
I move, Your Honor, that we open the period of discussion and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing and the motion is approved.
May seek recognition of Honorable Attorney JB Hison.
Councilor Attorney JB Hison is recognized.
Thank you very much, Honorable Presiding Chair. Ito pong ordinanasa po na ito ay isang ordinanasa po na mag-iimpose po ng tourism certification fee sa mga tourism-related establishment po sa loob ng lungsod ng Manila. Hindi naman po alintana sa atin na ang ating Department of Tourism, ang ating DT Cam po ay continuous po na nagpo-promote ng mga negosyo po ng lungsod ng Manila. At 'yung pagpo-promote po ng negosyo po ng DT Cam na sa lungsod ng Manila ay nagpaprodust naman din po ng additional income po para sa mga negosyo po sa lungsod. Ngunit po, kahit po ginagawa na ng DT Cam ang trabaho na ito, sila po ay walang pondo. Dahil po wala pong koleksyon po ang lungsod ng Manila para po sa benefit po ng tourism, para po sa promotion ng mga negosyo po sa loob ng lungsod ng Manila. Kaya po, iminong kahi po ng ating DT Cam na kailangan na kailangan po ang ordinasang ito para po magkaroon po ng additional na pondo ang lungsod ng Manila, in particular po ang ating DT Cam. Nang sagunon po eh, magamit po ito sa pagpapalago po ng negosyo sa lungsod ng Manila, sa pag-aakit po ng mga negosyante, sa pag-aakit po ng mga, ng mga, ng mga customer po. Nang sagunon eh, maiangat po natin ang antas po ng negosyo sa lungsod ng Manila. Kaya sana po suportahan po natin ang kinakailangan na po talaga na ordinasang ito. Thank you very much po, Mr. Chair.
Maraming salamat, Councilor. Meron po bang nais magtanong o magbigay ng suporta sa nasabing ordinanasa? Kung wala na, mad-
Your Honor, one minute recess.
One minute recess, take their budget chair.
Sa napakagandang proyekto ng ito, nagkagawa na ng BIB sa kulang na engineering ay napakagandang patatakot po ito na makapagbigay ng isang isang kalidad na serbisyo pagdating sa ating mga alagang hayop, aso at pusat.
And of course, ang mamamahala dito sa ating animal shelter and keep. So, advanced congratulations sa biterinary special board, puti-puti na po. Ang natutupad ang inyong mga pangarap para dito sa inyong puti baharihan. Maraming-maraming salamat, magandang habang po sa inyo lahat.
Tiamis Manila Makalintal, 63 years old. Papasalamat po ako sa medical mission na ginawa dito sa barangay. Lalo-lalo na po magkaroon, magpa-explay po ako dito sa leeg. Tapos sa mga kasama ng mga kabarangay dito, maraming-maraming po salamat. Yul Serbo at sa mga kasama nila.
Magandang hapon po, ako po ang iyong lingkod, Chairman Rahely Oji Basillon ng Barangay 317, Sum 32. Andito po kami dahil magahandog ng konting tulong ating mahal na Vice Mayor Yul Serbo Niyeto. Sana hangga't maari, ang pagsubok na yan ay matapos na sa mga nasunugan. Laban lang po habang may buhay. Andyan po ang city, andyan po si Mayor Hanilacuna, andyan vice si Vice Mayor. Andyan ti po ang ating mga Consejala. Ang mga Consejal, bukas po ang pinto nila para magbigay ng buong tulong. Pwersa po ng asenso manila niyo. Magandang hapon po, maraming salamat.
Ako po si Danilo Marcos, isa po sa nasunugan dito sa Bangbaan. At nagpapasalamat po kami ke Vice Mayor Yul Serbo sa mga tulong na binibigay niya sa anong. Thank you.
Maraming beses na kami nakipaglaban pagdating sa palupa. Hindi ulhat nagtakagumpay. Ngayong umaga ng totoo isang patunay na nagtakumpay ang lungsod ng Manila sa pakikpaglabang pagdating sa palupa. Pero ito hindi mangyayari kung hindi po pinush ang inyong mga binutong tao.
Nakakatuwa naman at 'yung 115 na may-ari ng structure ay mabibigyan ng certificate ngayon. Di ba maganda talaga pagka-kayo nagsasama-sama? Nagtutulog-tulungan, may magandang isunta. Kaya, congratulation po sa inyo sa pagsumigap niyo po na makamit ang inyong pangarap. At kami naman po, bilang asenso manila niyo, sagaling kay boss Danilacuna. E isa po 'yan sa mga magagandang programa. Gino 'yung makapagbigay ka ng magandang babahay para sa batang manila niyo. Basta mangarap lang po kayo. Katulad po nito, isang pangarap na naging totoo. Kaya wala po ni posible, basta pangarapin natin, trabahuin natin at makakamit po natin 'yan. Andyan po, maraming-maraming salamat sa inyo lahat.
Makalipas na 33 years. Tama ba? 33 years. Mular ng nasunog ang may 72 pinto ang pinauupahan na pag-aari ni Ginoong Francisco Tan Kupa noong January 29, 1990. Sa aking pong pagkaalala, siguro 'yung sa inyo napapinakamabilis. Kapabilis, agad-agad. Kaya po, tuluyan na na nabili ang lupa mula po sa programa ng inyong pamalaan, 'yung Land for the Landless program. At ngayong umaga, tumating na siguro ang pinakahihintayin. Papamahagi na natin sa inyo 'yung Certificate of Lot Award. Ako po masayang-masaya para sa inyo. Kaya wag po nating kakalimutan, magpasalamat sa kanya. Higit sa lahat po sa kanya. Ang inyong pong pamalaan instrumento lamang. At sisikapin po namin sa abot ng aming makakaya na lahat po ng mga kapwa naming manila niyo na kadayanin niyo ay mabigyan din po namin sa mga susunod ng panahon na matakawang nila sa liling kanila.
The Department of Tourism, Culture and Arts of Manila seeks to go beyond welcoming guests and maintaining artifacts, bringing the limited functions of the Manila Tourism and Cultural Bureau to an entirely different level. They have identified eight areas in Manila that may boost engagement of a bigger volume of visitors to the city. Hub 1, Tondo. At present, this widely residential area attracts tourists with its shopping mecca, Divisoria and Tutoban, the KKK monument, Plaza La Liga Filipina, Plaza Marga, Plaza Moriones, Santa Niña Church, Tutoban Center, and Fitas Skate Park, which mainly entices same-day visitors. The plan includes improvement of the following areas: Plaza La Candula redevelopment, Plaza La Liga Filipina enhancement, Ugo Food Strip, and Perfecto and Daya Foods Strip. Hub 2, Binondo Escolta. A trip to this part of Manila would always involve a gastronomical experience mixed with cultural sightseeing. Today, 168 Mall, Antonio Luna House, Binondo Church, Burke Building, Chinatown, Lucky Chinatown, Escolta Street, and Plaza Lorenzo Ruiz are their main crowd drawers. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose too. Redevelop Escolta and Muellier del Banco Nacional. Hub 3, Santa Cruz. The only standalone hub among the eight. It is known as the flower capital of the metro for Dangwa as well as the trade center for medical equipment. DT Cam and Bio Dev's projects include redevelopment of the Dangwa Flower Market, enhancement of Plaza Santa Cruz and Plaza Lakson, beautification of the LRT stations. Hub 4, Quiapo San Miguel Hub. While the Feast of the Black Nazarene always drives a trove of followers to the areas surrounding the Quiapo Church, there are other spots that may gain interest from tourists such as the Basilica de San Sebastián, Cariedo Street, Casa Rosas, Hospicio de San José, the Lagarda Heritage Mansion, Malacanyang Palace, Manila Golden Mosque and Cultural Center, Bautista Nakbil Heritage House, Plaza Miranda, Quinta Market, and San Miguel Church. The plan includes: Plaza Miranda redevelopment, Carrillo redevelopment, Plaza del Carmen redevelopment, Golden Mosque Area redevelopment, Quiapo Ilalim Souvenir Shop redevelopment. Hub 5, Sampalok and Santa Mesa. Hosts several colleges and universities, including the University of Santo Tomas, the Dambanan Apolinarium Mabini, which is considered as a national shrine, is located in Santa Mesa in District 6. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to include: Mabini Bridge Enhancement, U-Belt Streetscape Enhancement, Plaza Bustillos Redevelopment, LRT 2 Stations Beautification. Hub 6, Intramuros and Port Area. The major attractions in Intramuros Port Area include: The Ayuntamiento, Bahay Chinoy, Barbarous Heritage Restaurant, Bay Leaf Intramuros, Casa Manila, Club Intramuros Golf Course, Colegio de Santa Rosa, Colegio de San Juan de Letran, Fort Santiago, Ilustrado Restaurant, Manila Cathedral, Lyceum of the Philippines University, Manila North and South Harbors, Mapua University, Amantasa ng Lunsod ng Maynila, Plaza de Meiko, Intramuros Puerta Real Gardens, and Rizal Bagumbayan Lights and Sound Museum, San Agustin Church and Museum, Silahis Art Center, and Walls of Intramuros. Proposed enhancement would be: Intramuros Esplanade Muely del Río redevelopment. Hub 7, Ermita Paco Malate. The major attractions in Ermita Malate Paco Hub include various restaurants such as: Arisocrat and Bistro Remedios, district landmarks such as Bonifacio Shrine, City Hall of Manila, Kirino Grandstand, Rizal Park, religious sites such as Calza di Juan Sikh Temple, Ermita Church and Malate Church, museums such as: National Museum of Fine Arts, National Museum of Anthropology, National Museum of Natural History, Museo Pambata, Metropolitan Museum, among others. Proposed improvements are: Aroseros Urban Forest Park redevelopment, Freedom Park redevelopment, Raha Sulaiman Plaza redevelopment, Plaza Remedios redevelopment, City Hall Lock Tower redevelopment. Hub 8, Pandakan and Santa Ana. Pandakan and Santa Ana are both located in District 6. Santa Ana is known for its heritage district, which is composed of numerous historic ancestral houses, the Santa Ana Church, and its Camarin de la Virgen, where the patroness of Santa Ana is enshrined. The City Council of Manila passed an ordinance classifying the architectural district as a "historicultural heritage" or overlay zone. The former Pandakan Oil Depot will soon be redeveloped into a transport and food hub. The plan includes: Plaza Calderon redevelopment, Santa Ana Key redevelopment, Liwasang Baligtas redevelopment, Lambingan Bridge Enhancement. Manila aims to promote preservation of nature through its greening program. Hoping to infuse air purification, widening of street lots, and ensuring safety everywhere are all major components of the said improvement plan. Moreover, the main thrust is to saturate visitors in the unique experience each carefully chosen hub offers, something that only a visit to Manila can bring. By putting this plan into effect, the city stands to boost its full potential to attract more visitors, which in turn would prove beneficial to its beloved residents today and for the generations to come. Let the rise of the city from the ashes of the pandemic be accompanied by projects that not only provide tangible effects such as jobs, but with equally valuable intangibles such as hope, pride, and faith. Welcome po kayo sa Manila!
Meri akin tayo sa Lock Tower Museum. Parang pagpapakomisan tayo le. Ang mga batang Maynila, inimbitahan ko kayo 'yung mga mahilig sa art dyan. Pwede niyo rin dalawin ang Manila Lock Tower Museum dito sa City Hall. Okay, tapos na tayo dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. Oo, mga batang Maynila mahilig sa artwork dyan. Inimbitahan ko kayo dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. Merong show si Kublay, napakagaling na artist. Abangan niyo, marami pang mga artist na magso-show dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. Abangan niyo po 'yan. Ang gaganda ng mga sinabi sa'kin na lineup ni Ma'am, 'yung ating purator dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum.
Magandang-magandang araw po sa inyong lahat. At nagbabalik po tayo dito sa Manila Boys Town. At noon nakaraangling araw, ay nagroon tayo ng medical mission dito mismo sa lugar. At ilan sa mga recipient dito, 'yung mga lolo at lola at mga kabataan, ang ating binigay ng medical mission. At ngayon, tulad ng pangako ng ating Vice Mayor Yul Serbo Nieto, nababalikan natin ang isang elder dito na nagngangalang Wilma, kaya nandito tayo ngayon. And of course, siyempre, 'yung healing ni Nani Wilma na maoperahan 'yung kanyang paa dahil medyo makapal na po 'yung kalayo na meron sa kanyang paa. Eto na nga po. And of course, kasama rin natin ngayon, mula sa One Pinoy, tawagin natin si Kuya Willie Sakdalan. Kuya Willie! Yan, so ngayon, maraming-maraming salamat at tinamahan mo kami dito sa Manila Boys Town, dito sa Luwalhati. At maraming-maraming salamat sa mga gamot na bigay ng One Pinoy.
At 'yun naman talaga ang intention ng One Pinoy, ang makatulong at ito sa'kin, lalo-lalo na sa mga matatanda.
Noon nakaraang medical mission, nandidito ka rin, saksi ka rin sa mga kaganapan noon. Ikwento mo naman kung ano 'yung mga nangyari noon dun sa mismong medical mission?
Yes po, noon nakaraang medical mission, mostly ang pinakamarami naming nabigyan ng gamot ay 'yung mga matatanda. Lalo-lalo sa mga pangmeditation nila, 'yung mga pang araw-araw ng gamot. At ito sa'kin, eto nga, at maynadiskubre na isa dun sa mga humiling na operahan. At ito sa'kin, 'yun nga, at tuwing na naman na ating Vice Mayor Yul Serbo Nieto.
Correct, talagang napakalapit sa puso ng ating Vice Mayor 'yung mga senior citizen. Talagang malambot ang puso niya dyan. Kaya ano pang hiningintayin niyo? Tara na, simula na natin, samahan niyo kami sa Luohog. Kamusta po 'yung paa niyo? Masakit, tumikirot?
Tumikirot na, kasi nainfektion. 10 years na ko dito. Doon ka na sa mukha, bahay ampunan, kasi padamitan tayo doon. Pakainigay, may tulungan tayo, maganda doon. Marami ang nagdonation ng mga kama doon, sabi may mga komo tayo. Kulang ka sa pinag-aralan, hanggang ka lang katulong. Na edad na eh, out na. Hindi na kinukwan ng ahinsya. Paglaakwan ka na 50, dabas ka na. Umipon ako, hindi ako makapaipon talaga, nagkakasakit ako. May naipon ako 20 klausan noon. Binom na kuwan ako, nagkakasakit ng isang buwan talaga. Hugot na naman na hugot, wala rin nangyari. Kasi ang pagtulong ninyo, may reward kayo sa taas. Oo, kuwan, lutusan niyang puso ninyo. Ang pagtulong ninyo, ang Diyos ang babalikan kayo ng magandang kaluwan niya. Eh, siya nagsabi kay doktora, gawin mo, sabi o babalikan ko. Eh, ngayon dito kayo, salamat.
Salamat, salamat.
And tapos na po 'yung ginawa naming minor surgery kay Nani Wilma. Kasama ko of course si Doc Dayan. So Doc Dayan, ano ba 'yung nangyari dun sa case ni Nani Wilma?
Ay, si Nani Wilma, Marce, noon kabataan niya naaksidente sa show. Drive niya sa pinakabangaan niya ay nadistok. So, eto si ang ating surgery.
And of course, kasama namin si Doc Chris Abiki. Yan, siya 'yung surgery natin ngayon.
So, 'yung ano, 'yung kwento ni Nani, dun nga, 'yung kabataan niya nadistok. Siya ako sa 'yung pinaka-drive ng paan niya para nun wala'y. So, 'yung time ngayon, siya osabi niya, kwento niya, parang hindi wala daw siya pera, papaobeng. So, nahayahan niya. So, 'yung ano niya, 'yung paan niya sa ano, lagi niya tinatapa, nagkaroon ng halos.
Maraming-maraming salamat, at isa na naman po sa mga kabarangay natin, batang Maynila, 'yung gumaan 'yung pakiramdam dahil natanggal 'yung sakit at hirap na nararamdaman niya araw-araw. Sampung taon, sampung taon niyang tiniis 'yun. Ayan, so sa ating mga kaibigan, huli, eto na po natatapos 'yung aming journey dito sa Luwalhati, 'yan, ng Maynila. Maraming-maraming salamat po, of course, kay Doc Dayan Nieto at kay Doc Chris Abiki. Ayan, so lagi kayong umantabay sa ating mga page para maging update kayo sa mga kaganapan dito sa lungsod ng Maynila. Thank you!
Lakat po ng kanyang mga proyekto ibinababa sa barangayan ay marami pong mga constituent namin ang umupunta at nakikinabang sa kanyang magandang mga proyekto. Napakarami po ang kanyang mga proyektong ibinababa sa barangay. Kaya ang mga constituent namin sa buong Manila ay natutuwa sa kanyang mga ginagawa dito.
Napakalaking tulong po ito para sa amin, hindi lang po sa seniors, kundi sa pagkalahatan. Talaga pong kailangan namin ito sa bawat barangay, saka sa zona. Kasi po, hindi namang po lahat ng tao ay may kakayanan na magbayad para sa tseka po ano pa mang po nga kailangan, katulad po namin mga seniors, mga maintenance namin, tsaka bite tanis, mostly 'yung BP at saka kung matasam blood sugar.
Maraming salamat po sa inyong lahat. At basta magigingan mo kayo malaki. Stay safe, stay healthy, stay happy always.
Kagaya po na nag-anap kayong gabi, napailawan po natin ang kahabaan ng One Luna simula klanro ebrekto hanggang dito po sa Muely Dela Industria kasama na po ang Plaza Cervantes. Napakahalaga po ng papapailaw natin kayong gabi dahil ito po ay isang lugar na kadalasan ay pinupuntahan ng ating mga kababayan, ang lugar ng binondo. 'Yun po ang ninanais natin na mapailawan ang buong kamaynilaan. At ito po ay hindi namang po gaya ng inyong likod lamang, kundi katuwak po po ang aking pung partner, siyempre, Vice Mayor Yul Servo Nieto. Panatili natin ang peace and order at para po mas maging maaliwanas ang buong kapaligiran natin, makaanyaya pa po tayo na mas marami pong mga businesses ang magtayo dito. At siyempre po, para naman pagdating ng gabi, hindi po matatakot ang ating mga kababayan na by-bye, hindi lamang pong binondo, kundi ang buong kamaynilaan. Ito rin po ang simula ng ating pong papapaganda, lalo ng ating lungsod. Gaya nga po na sinabi natin, ating pong itinatabuyan ang turismo ngayon. Isa po ang binondo sa walong hubs or tourism hubs na ating pong dinidevelop at niriredevelop. Kaya nga po, sa lahat po ng mga magagandang loob, ang ating pong mga partner, ang Meralco, siyempre, na walang sawa pong sumusuporta sa atin at sa atin naman pong pamalaan, siyempre, ang City Electricians Office at ang Department of Engineering. At sa'ko po ng lahat ng kanilang kauni, ang aking pong pasasalamat dahil unti-unti na pong nagbabalik ang tinglin ng ating lungsod. Muli po, magandang-magandang gabi sa inyong lahat.
I'm Juan Zian Sebastian Manalo from Collejo de San Juan de Letran. And our script is entitled "The Ankani." So 'yung script kasi nito is, ano, it's very personal din kasi it's a dark fairy tale and about siya sa dalawang, two individuals sa may magkakaibang background na pagtatagpuin sila ng tadhana. And dun sa pagpasok nila sa isang mansion, doon magiging ankani lahat ng mga mararanasan nila. Kasi it goes beyond romance, it goes beyond horror, it goes beyond reality and sanity. So 'yun ang dapat siguro abangan din sa script ko. So 'yun.
I'm Carlo James Buon from Collejo de San Juan de Letran. And my script is "The Adventures of Queen Joannabel." So basically, ang pag-uusapan natin sa peliko lang to ay ang dangerous ng social media. Kung gaano ang social media ay kayang paikutin ang mga buhay natin, 'yun lang. Mahahabi pa tayong aabangan sa film na to. So thank you sa Manila City Hall and kay Mayor Hanila Kunya sa pagbibigay ng opportunity na to. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Christie Fider. And of course, congratulations sa lahat ng inawarde natin this morning. And good luck and sana 'yung mga, the rest ng entries, magpatuloy pa kayo magsubay. Congratulations again.
Ang nais kong batiin, ang mga mapapalad na napili na apat na eskwelahan na pwede ng makapaggawa ng pelikula at pwede na nilang masimulan, maggrind 'yung kanilang screenplay na ipinasa dito sa The Manila Film Festival. At abangan niyo po 'yung apat uli dahil bali't total inate ang mga pelikula na magsasama-sama para magrepresentahan ang kanilang mga istorya bilang Pilipino. At hinikayat ko ang ating mga kababayan na suportahan ang The Manila Film Festival sa muling pagbabalik nito sa pinalakang tabing. Kaya at abangan natin ang mga artista at ang mga gagawin ng ating mga direktor at nasa likod ng camera. Kaya mga Batang Maynila, mga kababayan Pilipino, para na, suportahan natin ang The Manila Film Festival sa darating na June, sa araw ng Maynila. Maraming salamat. Asenso, Manila niyo.
Vice Mayor, malaking tulong sa mga nasunugan. Malaking pasalamat namin ni Vice Mayor Yul Servo dahil siya talaga, dinuturo na siya ng tao. Nakakaganda rin sa kanya. Talagang minamahal siya dito sa amin pa barangay. Mula pa siya kunsi hal, minamahal namin sa amin barangay. Maraming salamat po nga ang kanyang adhikain. Malaki ang pagtulong niya sa mga ganitong sitwasyon na nasunugan.
Maraming-maraming salamat po Vice Mayor Yul Servo. Number one sa amin 'yan. Malaking tulong sa amin, ang mga nasunugan.
Napakabilis po ng tulong ni Vice Mayor sa amin dito nasunugan sa parola. Napakaano po nila sa amin. Maraming-maraming salamat po sa kabua ng lungsod ng Maynila para sa amin po na nasunugan.
Kyapo Ilalim Souvenir Shop Redevelopment. The Department of Tourism, Culture and Arts of Manila seeks to go beyond welcoming guests and maintaining artifacts, bringing the limited functions of the Manila Tourism and Cultural Bureau to an entirely different level. They have identified eight areas in Manila that may boost engagement of a bigger volume of visitors to the city. Hub 1, Tondo. At present, this widely residential area attracts tourists with its shopping mecca, Divisoria and Tutoban, the KKK monument, Plaza La Liga Filipina, Plaza Marga, Plaza Moriones, Santa Nina Church, Tutoban Center, and Vitaz Skate Park, which mainly entices same-day visitors. The plan includes improvement of the following areas. Plaza La Candula redevelopment, Plaza La Liga Filipina enhancement, Ubo Foods Trip, and Perfecto Endaya Foods Trip. Hub 2, Binondo Escolta. A trip to this part of Manila would always involve a gastronomical experience mixed with cultural sightseeing. Today, 168 mall, Antonio Luna House, Binondo Church, Burke Building, Chinatown, Lucky Chinatown, Escolta Street, and Plaza Lorenzo Ruiz are their main crowd drawers. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to. Redevelop Escolta and Muely del Banco Nacional. Hub 3, Santa Cruz. The only standalone hub among the eight. It is known as the flower capital of the metro for Dangwa as well as the trade center for medical equipment. DT Cam and Bio Dev's projects include redevelopment of the Dangwa Flower Market, enhancement of Plaza Santa Cruz and Plaza Lacson, beautification of the LRT stations. Hub 4, Kyapo San Miguel Hub. While the Feast of the Black Nazarene always drives a trove of followers to the areas surrounding the Kyapo Church, there are other spots that may gain interest from tourists such as the Basilica de San Sebastian, Cariedo Street, Casa Rosas, Hospicio de San Jose, the Legarda Heritage Mansion, Malakanyang Palace, Manila Golden Mosque and Cultural Center, Bautisan Akbil Heritage House, Plaza Miranda, Quinta Market, and San Miguel Church. The plan includes: Plaza Miranda redevelopment, Cariedo redevelopment, Plaza del Carmen redevelopment, Golden Mosque Area redevelopment, Kyapo Ilalim Souvenir Shop redevelopment, Hub 5, Sampalok and Santa Mesa. Hosts several colleges and universities, including the University of Santo Tomas. The Dambanang Apolinaryo Mabini, which is considered as a national shrine, is located in Santa Mesa in District 6. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to include: Mabini Bridge Enhancement, U Belt Streetscape Enhancement, Plaza Bustillos redevelopment, LRT 2 Stations Beautification. Hub 6, Intramuros and Port Area. The major attractions in Intramuros Port Area include: The Ayuntamiento, Bahay Chinoy, Barbara's Heritage Restaurant, Bay Leaf Intramuros, Casa Manila, Club Intramuros Golf Course, Colegio de Santa Rosa, Colegio de San Juan de Letran, Fort Santiago, Ilustrado Restaurant, Manila Cathedral, Lyceum of the Philippines University, Manila North and South Harbors, Mapua University, Pamantasan ng Lunsod ng Maynila, Plaza de Meiko, Intramuros Puerta Real Gardens, and Rizal Bagumbayan Lights and Sound Museum, San Agustin Church and Museum, Silahes Art Center, and Walls of Intramuros. Proposed enhancement would be: Intramuros Esplanade, Muely del Río redevelopment. Hub 7, Hermita Paco Malate. The major attractions in Hermita Malate Paco Hub include various restaurants such as: Aristocrat and Bistro Remedios, district landmarks such as Bonifacio Shrine, City Hall of Manila, Kirino Grandstand, Rizal Park, religious sites such as Calza Diwan Sikh Temple, Hermita Church and Malate Church, museums such as National Museum of Fine Arts, National Museum of Anthropology, National Museum of Natural History, Museo Pambata, Metropolitan Museum, among others. Proposed improvements are: Araceros Urban Forest Park redevelopment, Freedom Park redevelopment, Raja Sulaiman Plaza redevelopment, Plaza Remedios redevelopment, City Hall Clock Tower redevelopment, Hub 8, Pandakan and Santa Ana. Pandakan and Santa Ana are both located in District 6. Santa Ana is known for its heritage district, which is composed of numerous historic ancestral houses, the Santa Ana Church, and its Camarin de la Virgen, where the patroness of Santa Ana is enshrined. The City Council of Manila passed an ordinance classifying the architectural district as a "histocultural heritage" or "overlay zone." The former Pandakan Oil Depot will soon be redeveloped into a transport and food hub. The plan includes: Plaza Calderon redevelopment, Santa Ana Key redevelopment. Liwasang Baligtas redevelopment, Lambingan Bridge Enhancement. Manila aims to promote preservation of nature through its greening program. Hoping to infuse air purification, widening of street lots, and ensuring safety everywhere are all major components of the said improvement plan. Moreover, the main thrust is to saturate visitors in the unique experience each carefully chosen hub offers, something that only a visit to Manila can bring. By putting this plan into effect, the city stands to boost its full potential to attract more visitors, which in turn would prove beneficial to its beloved residents today and for the generations to come. Let the rise of the city from the ashes of the pandemic be accompanied by projects that not only provide tangible effects such as jobs, but with equally valuable intangibles such as hope, pride, and faith. Welcome po kayo sa Manila!
Ngayong gabing ito, ay inilawan natin ang pangalawang bahagi ng napakahabang AH Lacson. Huli po, maraming maraming salamat. Hindi po ito ang huli. Ang akong po naming sa'yo hangga't sa abot ng aming makakaya. Kaya nga po ng aking sinabi, liliwanag at liliwanag ang buong kamay nila. Maraming salamat, magandang gabi po sa'yo.
Sa napakagandang proyektong ito, nagkagawa ng BIB sa puro ng engineering, ay napakaagad ang pagkakatumputo na makapagbigay ng isang kadidad na serbisyo pagdating sa ating mga alangan hayop, aso, at pusak.
And of course, ang mamamahala dito sa ating Animal Shelter and Zoo. So, advanced congratulations sa veterinarians, vet shoot board, punti punti na po. Ang atumpat, akin 'yung mga pangarap para dito sa iyong punti maharian. Maraming maraming salamat, magandang habot po sa'yo.
Tia Hermita Nilo Makalintal, 63 years old. Papasalamat po ako sa medical mission na ginawa dito sa barangay. Lalo-lalo na po magkaroon, magpa-explay po ako dito sa leeg. Tapos sa mga kasama ng mga kabarang gaya dito, maraming maraming salamat. Pure serve po at saka, po sa mga iba.
Maraming salamat po Vice Mayor.
Maraming beses na kami nakipaglaban pagdating sa panupa. Hindi kulhat, naktatabumpay. Ngayong umaga, ito isang patunay na naktabumpay ang lungsod ng Maynila sa pakikipaglabang pagdating sa panupa. Pero ito hindi mangyayari kung hindi po pinush ang inyong mga binutong tao. Nakakakuha naman at 'yung 115 na bi-ari ng structure na mabibigyan ng certificate ngayon. Diba maganda talaga pagka-tayo nagsasama-sama, nagtutunog-tulungan, may magandang sunod? Kaya, congratulations po sa inyo sa pagsumigap niyo po na makamit ang inyong pangarap. At kami naman po, bilang asenso Manila inyo, sagaling kay boss Danila po na isa po 'yan sa mga magagandang programa. Gano'n mo makapagbigay ka ng magandang babahay para sa batang Manila inyo. Basta mangarap lang po kayo, katulad po nito, isang pangarap na naging totoo. Kaya wala pong imposible basta pangarapin natin, trabahuin natin, at makakamit po natin 'yan. At 'yun na po, maraming maraming salamat sa inyo lahat.
Makalipas ng 33 years, tama ba? 33 years. Mular ng nasunog ang may pitumpot dalawang pinto ang pinaupahan na pag-aari ni ginoong Francisco Tan Kumpa noong January 29, 1990. Sa aking pangkaalala, siguro 'yung sa inyo na po pinakamabilis. Ang bilis, agad-agad. Kaya po, tuluyan na, nanabili ang lupa mula po sa programa ng inyong pamalaan, 'yung Land for the Landless Program. At ngayong umaga, tumating na siguro ang pinakahihintay niyo. Papamahagi na natin sa inyo 'yung Certificate of Land Award. Ako po masaya-masaya para sa inyo. Kaya wag po natin kakalimutan magpasalamat sa kanya. Pigin sa lahat po sa kanya. Ang inyong pampamalaan instrumento lamang po. At sisikapin po namin sa abot ng aming makakaya na lahat po na mga kapwa naming Manila inyo, na kagaya rin niyo, ay mabigyan din po namin sa mga susunod ng panahon na matakawang nila sa liling kanila.
Okay, akin tayo sa Lock Tower Museum. Pangpepapo, minsan tayo wala eh. O mga batang Maynila, iniimbitahan ko kayo 'yung mga mahihilig sa art dyan. Pwede niyo rin dalawin ang Manila Lock Tower Museum dito sa City Hall. Okay, tapos na tayo dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. O mga batang Maynila mahiilig sa artwork dyan. Iimbitahan ko kayo dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. Merong show si Kublai, napakagaling na artist. Bandan bisita at... Abangan niyo, marami pang mga artist na magsushow dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum. Abangan niyo po 'yan. Ang gaganda ng mga sinabi sa akin na lineup ni Ma'am. 'Yung ating purator dito sa Manila Lock Tower Museum.
Lahat po ng kanyang mga proyekto ibinababa sa barangayan, ay marami pong mga constituent namin ang umupunta at nakikinabang sa kanyang magandang mga proyekto. Napakarami po ang kanyang mga proyektong ibinababa sa barangay. Kaya ang mga constituent namin sa buo Manila ay natutuwa sa kanyang mga hinagawa dito.
Napakalaking tulong po ito para sa amin, hindi lang po sa seniors kundi sa pagkalahatan. Talaga pong kailangan namin ito sa bawat barangay, saka sa zona. Kasi po, hindi namang po lahat ng tao eh may kakayanan na magbayad para sa tsaka po ano pa man pong mga kailangan. Katulad po namin mga seniors, mga maintenance namin, tsaka bathroomis. Mostly 'yung BP at saka kung matasang blood sugar.
Vice Mayor, malaking tulong sa mga nasunugan. Malaking pasalamat namin ni Vice Mayor Yul Serbo dahil siya talaga, binuturo man siya ng tao. Nakakaganda rin sa kanya, talagang minamahal siya dito sa amin pa barangay. Mula pa siya kunsi hal, minamahal namin sa amin barangay. Maraming salamat po na ang kanyang adhikain, malaki ang pagtulong niya sa mga ganitong sitwasyon na nasunugan.
Maraming-maraming salamat po Vice Mayor Yul Serbo, number one sa amin 'yan. Malaking tulong sa amin, ang mga nasunugan.
Ano pakabilis po ng tulong ni Vice Mayor sa amin dito nasunugan sa parola? Napakaano po nila sa amin, maraming-maraming salamat po sa kabuo ng lungsod ng Manila para sa amin po na nasunugan.
Santa Cruz, the only standalone hub among the eight. It is known as the flower capital of the metro for Dangwa as well as the trade center for medical equipment. DT Cam and Bio Dev's projects include redevelopment of the Dangwa Flower Market, enhancement of Plaza Santa Cruz and Plaza Lacson, beautification of the LRT stations, Hub 4, Chiapo San Miguel Hub. While the Feast of the Black Nazarene always drives a trove of followers to the areas surrounding the Chiapo Church, there are other spots that may gain interest from tourists such as: The Basilica de San Sebastián, Cariedo Street, Casa Rosas, Posticio de San José, The Legarda Heritage Mansion, Malacanyang Palace, Manila Golden Mosque and Cultural Center, Bautista Nakbil Heritage House, Plaza Miranda, Quinta Market, and San Miguel Church. The plan includes: Plaza Miranda redevelopment, Cariedo redevelopment, Plaza del Carmen redevelopment, Golden Mosque Area redevelopment, Chiapo Ilalim Souvenir Shop redevelopment, Hub 5, Sampalok and Santa Mesa. Hosts several colleges and universities including the University of Santo Tomas, the Dambanang Apolinaryo Mabini, which is considered as a national shrine, is located in Santa Mesa in District 6. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to include: Mabini Bridge Enhancement, U-Belt Streetscape Enhancement, Plaza Bustillos Redevelopment, LRT 2 Stations Beautification. Hub 6, Intramuros and Port Area. The major attractions in Intramuros Port Area include: The Ayuntamiento, Bahay Chinoy, Barbarous Heritage Restaurant, Bay Leaf Intramuros, Casa Manila, Club Intramuros Golf Course, Colegio de Santa Rosa, Colegio de San Juan de Letran, Fort San Chago, Ilustrado Restaurant, Manila Cathedral, Lyceum of the Philippines University, Manila North and South Harbors, Mapua University, Pamantasan ang Lunsod ng Manila, Plaza de Meiko, Intramuros Puerta Real Gardens, and Rizal Bagumbayan Lights and Sound Museum, San Agustin Church and Museum, Silahis Art Center, and Walls of Intramuros. Proposed enhancement would be: Intramuros Esplanade, Muely del Río redevelopment. Hub 7, Ermita Paco Malate. The major attractions in Ermita Malate Paco Hub include various restaurants such as: Aristocrat and Bistro Remedios, district landmarks such as Bonifacio Shrine, City Hall of Manila, Kirino Grandstand, Rizal Park, religious sites such as Calza Diwan Sikh Temple, Ermita Church and Malate Church, museums such as National Museum of Fine Arts, National Museum of Anthropology, National Museum of Natural History, Museo Pambata, Metropolitan Museum, among others. Proposed improvements are: Araceros Urban Forest Park redevelopment, Freedom Park redevelopment, Raja Sulaiman Plaza redevelopment, Plaza Remedios redevelopment, City Hall Lock Tower redevelopment. Hub 8, Pandakan and Santa Ana. Pandakan and Santa Ana are both located in District 6. Santa Ana is known for its heritage district, which is composed of numerous historic ancestral houses, the Santa Ana Church, and its Camarin de la Virhe, where the patroness of Santa Ana is enshrined. The City Council of Manila passed an ordinance classifying the architectural district as a "histocultural heritage or overlay zone." The former Pandakan Oil Depot will soon be redeveloped into a transport and food hub. The planning includes: Plaza Calderón redevelopment, Santa Ana Key redevelopment, Liwasang Baligtas redevelopment, Lambigan Bridge Enhancement. Manila aims to promote preservation of nature through its greening program. Hoping to infuse air purification, widening of street lots, and ensuring safety everywhere are all major components of the said improvement plan. Moreover, the main thrust is to saturate visitors in the unique experience each carefully chosen hub offers, something that only a visit to Manila can bring. By putting this plan into effect, the city stands to boost its full potential to attract more visitors, which in turn would prove beneficial to its beloved residents today and for the generations to come. Let the rise of the city from the ashes of the pandemic be accompanied by projects that not only provide tangible effects such as jobs, but with equally valuable intangibles such as hope, pride, and faith. Welcome po kayo sa Manila!
Vice Mayor, malaking tulong sa mga nasunugan. Malaking pasalamat namin ni Vice Mayor Yul Serbo dahil siya talaga, binuturo man siya ng tao. Nakakaganda rin sa kanya, talagang minamahal siya dito sa amin pa barangay. Mula pa siya kunsi hal, minamahal namin sa amin barangay. Maraming salamat po na ang kanyang adhikain, malaki ang pagtulong niya sa mga ganitong sitwasyon na nasunugan.
Maraming-maraming salamat po Vice Mayor Yul Serbo, number one sa amin 'yan. Malaking tulong sa amin, ang mga nasunugan.
Ano pakabilis po ng tulong ni Vice Mayor sa amin dito nasunugan sa parola? Napakaano po nila sa amin, maraming-maraming salamat po sa kabuo ng lungsod ng Manila para sa amin po na nasunugan.
Kagaya po ng nag-anap kayong gabi, napailawan po natin ang kahabaan ng One Luna simula Claro Em Repto hanggang dito po sa Puely de la Industria kasama na po ang Plaza Servantes. Napakahalaga po ng papapailaw natin kayong gabi dahil ito po ay isang lugar na kadalasan ay pinupuntahan ng ating mga kababayan, ang lugar ng binondo. 'Yun po ang ninanais natin na mapailawan ang buong kabaynilaan. At ito po ay hindi namang po kaya ng inyong likod lamang, kundi katuwak po po ang aking pong partner, siyempre Vice Mayor Yul Serbo Nieto. Panatili natin ang peace and order at para po mas maging maaliwanas ang buong kapaligiran natin, makaanyaya pa po tayo na mas maraming pong mga businesses ang magtayo dito. At siyempre po, para namang pagdating ng gabi, hindi po matatakot ang ating mga kababayan na baybayin hindi lamang pong binondo kundi ang buong kabaynilaan. Ito rin po ang simula ng ating pong pagpapaganda, lalo ng ating lungsod. Kaya nga po na sinabi natin, ating pong itinataguyan ang turismo ngayon. Isa po ang binondo sa walong hubs or tourism hubs na ating pong dinidevelop at diridewel. Kaya nga po, sa lahat po na mga magagandang loob, ang ating pong mga partner, ang Meralco, siyempre na walang sawa pong sumusuporta sa atin. At sa atin naman pong pamalaan, siyempre ang City Electricians Office at ang Department of Engineering at sa po po ng lahat ng kanilang kauni ang aking pong pasasalamat dahil unti-unti na pong nagbabalik ang tinglin ng ating lungsod. Huli po, magandang-magandang gabi sa inyo.
Muely del Río redevelopment. The Department of Tourism, Culture and Arts of Manila seeks to go beyond welcoming guests and maintaining artifacts, bringing the limited functions of the Manila Tourism and Cultural Bureau to an entirely different level. They have identified eight areas in Manila that may boost engagement of a bigger volume of visitors to the city. Hub 1, Tondo. At present, this widely residential area attracts tourists with its shopping mecca, the Visoria and Tutoban, the KKK Monument, Plaza La Liga Filipina, Plaza Marga, Plaza Moriones, Santo Niño Church, Tutoban Center, and Vitaz Skate Park, which mainly entices same-day visitors. The plan includes improvement of the following areas: Plaza La Candula redevelopment, Plaza La Liga Filipina Enhancement, Ugo Food Strip, and Perfecto and Daya Foods Strip. Hub 2, Binondo Escolta. A trip to this part of Manila would always involve a gastronomical experience mixed with cultural sightseeing. Today, 168 Mall, Antonio Luna House, Binondo Church, Burke Building, Chinatown, Lucky Chinatown, Escolta Street, and Plaza Lorenzo Ruiz are their main are their main crowd draws. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to redevelop Escolta and Muely del Banco Nacional. Hub 3, Santa Cruz. The only standalone hub among the eight. It is known as the flower capital of the metro for Dangwa as well as the trade center for medical equipment. DT Cam and Bio Dev's projects include: redevelopment of the Dangwa Flower Market; enhancement of Plaza Santa Cruz and Plaza Lacson; beautification of the LRT stations. Hub 4, Chiapo San Miguel Hub. While the Feast of the Black Nazarene always drives a trove of followers to the areas surrounding the Chiapo Church, there are other spots that may gain interest from tourists, such as: The Basilica de San Sebastián, Cariedo Street, Casa Rosas, Hospicio de San José, the Legarda Heritage Mansion, Malacanyang Palace, Manila Golden Mosque and Cultural Center, Bautista Nak Bill Heritage House, Plaza Miranda, Quinta Market, and San Miguel Church. The plan includes: Plaza Miranda redevelopment; Cariedo redevelopment; Plaza del Carmen redevelopment; Golden Mosque Area redevelopment; Chiapo Ilalim Souvenir Shop redevelopment; Hub 5, Sampa洛克 and Santa Mesa. Hosts several colleges and universities, including the University of Santo Tomas. The damba ng Apolinaryo Mabini, which is considered as a national shrine, is located in Santa Mesa in District 6. DT Cam and Bio Dev propose to include: Mabini Bridge Enhancement; U Belt Streetscape Enhancement; Plaza Bustillos redevelopment; LRT 2 Stations Beautification. Hub 6, Intramuros and Port Area. The major attractions in Intramuros Port Area include: The Ayuntamiento, Bai Chinoi, Barbarous Heritage Restaurant, Bay Leaf Intramuros, Casa Manila, Club Intramuros Golf Course, Colegio de Santa Rosa, Colegio de San Juan de Letran, Fort Santiago, Ilustrado Restaurant, Manila Cathedral, Lyceum of the Philippines University, Manila North and South Harbors, Mapua University, Amantasa ng Lunsood ng Maynila, Plaza de Meiko, Intramuros Puerta Real Gardens, and Rizal Bagong Bayan Lights and Sound Museum, San Agustin Church and Museum, Silaj's Art Center, and Walls of Intramuros. Proposed enhancement would be: Intramuros Esplanade, Muely Del Rio redevelopment. Hub 7, Ermita Paco Malate. The major attractions in Ermita Malate Paco Hub include various restaurants, such as Aristocrat and Biistro Remedios, district landmarks such as Bonifacio Shrine, City Hall of Manila, Kirino Grandstand, Rizal Park, religious sites such as Calza Diwan Sikh Temple, Ermita Church and Malate Church, museums such as: National Museum of Fine Arts, National Museum of Anthropology, National Museum of Natural History, Museo Pambata, Metropolitan Museum, among others. Proposed improvements are: Araceros Urban Forest Park redevelopment; Freedom Park redevelopment; Raja Sulaiman Plaza redevelopment; Plaza Remedios redevelopment; City Hall Clock Tower redevelopment. Hub 8, Pandakan and Santa Ana. Pandakan and Santa Ana are both located in District 6. Santa Ana is known for its heritage district, which is composed of numerous historic ancestral houses, the Santa Ana Church, and its Camarín de la Virhe, where the patroness of Santa Ana is enshrined. The City Council of Manila passed an ordinance classifying the Architectural District as a "historicultural heritage" or overlay zone. The former Pandakan Oil Depot will soon be redeveloped into a transport and food hub. The plan includes: Plaza Calderón redevelopment; Santa Ana Key redevelopment; Liwasang Balagtas redevelopment; Lambigan Bridge enhancement. Manila aims to promote preservation of nature through its-
Teka lang po, dito lang muna kayo para selfie naman ako sa inyo. Dahil madami kayo bababa ko.
The Department of Tourism, Culture and Arts of Manila seeks to go beyond welcoming guests and maintaining artifacts, bringing the limited functions of the Manila Tourism and Cultural Bureau to an entirely different level. They have identified eight areas in Manila that may boost-
Session resume. Majority of our leader.
Your Honor, we are still in the discussion and debate with respect on ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee of the tourism enterprise establishments under the services of the City of Manila. May I again seek recognition of Honorable Attorney J.B. Hison?
Counselor Attorney J.B. Hison is recognized to sponsor the ordinance.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, during the recess, Your Honor, uh, we have discussions with, uh, with the concerned councilors regarding some of the provisions that, uh, needs to be revised, Your Honor, and, uh, I will raise the same during the period of amendments. However, so in the interim period, I was approached by Counselor Bobby Espirito regarding some matters in the ordinance, so I would like him to be recognized so he could raise the same.
Counselor Bobby Espiritu is recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding po rito sa Article F miscellaneous provisions, Section 9, Registration of Guests. All tourism enterprises shall keep a registry record book. All guest visitors seeking accommodations shall be required to register the following particulars in the registry: Full name, particulars of any identity, passport or travel documents, the place of his/her origin, the probable duration, the occupation and place of employment, nationality, the hour and date of her/his or her arrival. Under po dito sa Article C definitions, Section 5, Letter B, Tourism Enterprises refers to facilities, services, and attractions involved in tourism, such as but not limited to: Travel and tour services, tourist transport services, whether for land, sea, or air transportation, tour guides, convention organizers, accommodation establishments, including but not limited to: Hotels, resorts, apartels, tourist inns, motels, pension house, and homestay operators, tourism estate management services, restaurants, shops, and department stores, sports and recreational centers, spas, museums, galleries, theme parks, and convention centers. Ibig sabihin po ba neto 'yung lahat ng papasok po sa mga restaurants? Kailangan natin kunin 'yung ano po nila? Kailangan nilang, uh, kailangan po nilang mag-register dun sa registry book? Pagpapasok po sa mga restaurants? At saka pagpapasok po sa lahat ng tourism enterprises?
Counselor Attorney J.B. Hison.
Your Honor, I agree, Your Honor, with the manifest- as, Your Honor, as the representative of the Committee on Ways and Means, I agree, Your Honor, with the manifestation of Counselor Espirito, Your Honor. So, uh, later on, Your Honor, during the period of amendment, Your Honor, I will move to remove Section 9 of this ordinance, Your Honor. As it is unnecessary to achieve the purpose of creating eh, of, uh, to achieve the purpose of establishing a tourism certification fee, Your Honor. It will also impose, uh, very, very difficult obligation, Your Honor, on the business establishments, considering that if you are going to collect personal information under the Data Privacy Act, you will need to, you will need to hire a data processing officer, which is an undue burden, Your Honor, on the establishments included here, Your Honor. So I actually second the manifestation of Counselor Espirito, and, uh, later on, Your Honor, during the period of amendment, Your Honor, I will move to delete Section 9 of this ordinance. And I will also raise, Your Honor, that I and also intend to remove Section 10 of this ordinance, Your Honor, because I believe that Section 10 is more proper for a, is more proper to, uh, to, to be a separate ordinance, maybe a maybe an amendment of the building code, but it is not necessary for the ordinance at hand, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Bobby Lim?
Hello, maraming salamat, Your Honor. Your Honor, meron ako na basa rito sa Section 9, Registration of Guests. Of, all, uh, all tourism enterprises shall have the registration, registry and record book. Ibig sabihin, siguro naman 'yung mga restaurant pagpapasok 'yung mga turista. Hindi ho natin alam kung turista siya o hindi, or, or nakatira dito. So siguro eto na ito is redandan na, malina siguro ito. Pwede na ho natin, kumari lang, kapupapayag ang, uh, author. Paddelete ho natin ito 'yung Section 9.
Yes, Counselor Bobby Lim, uh, kanina minanepes niya na ididdelete niya 'yung Section 9.
Uh, if I may address the question lang po. Yes po, uh, Counselor Bobby Lim, na we think po na problematic po talaga 'yung Section 9, and instead of amending it, we are propos- I am going to propose during the period of amendment to totally remove Section 9. Kasi po it is unnecessary for this ordinance, and, uh, it will impose an undue, uh, an undue duty to the, to the proprietors po, kasi pagka po na kolekta po tayo ng personal information, required po sa Data Privacy Act na may data processing officer po tayo, na tingin ko po hindi kayang gawin na mga establishmentong nakasaad po rito. Thank you very much po.
Maraming salamat.
Without your honor, I move that we close the period of discussion and debate.
There is a motion to close the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
I move, Your Honor, that we open the period of amendments.
There is a motion to open the period of amendments. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
Uh, Your Honor, uh-
Yes, Counselor Attorney J.B. Hison.
First, Your Honor, we, uh, we propose to amend Article C, Section 5, Letter B, convenience store, uh, it should read now, convenience store refers to any 24-hour service outlet with a capitalization of above 1 million pesos. And then, Your Honor, uh, letter, uh, Section 5, Article C, uh, Letter D, subsection D, uh, which is gym, it should now read, gym refers to fitness centers with a franchise. And then, uh, Article C, Section 5, uh, Letter D, subsection, Letter E, uh, it should now read, uh, kiosks, fast, kiosks, fast food, and then delete food stalls and eatery. And then, Your Honor, uh, also amend Article C, Section, Section 5, Letter D, subsection, Letter- Apologies, Your Honor, uh, uh, the, apologies, Your Honor, uh, the next amendment will be on Article D, Section 6, uh, subsection 6.2. Letter E, Your Honor, should only read kiosks and fast food, Your Honor, so delete food stalls and eatery. And then, Your Honor, uh, we also propose to amend, Article F miscellaneous provisions, because it should read Article G miscellaneous provisions. And then, Your Honor, under Article G now, miscellaneous provisions, uh, Section 9 to delete entirety of Section 9. And we also propose, Your Honor, to delete the entirety of Section 10, and then, Your Honor, to adjust the section numberings on the remaining sections, Your Honor.
Salamat. Majority of our leader.
Yes, Your Honor, we accept the amendment. Without your honor, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There is a motion to close the period of amendments? Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
I move, Your Honor, that we approve for second reading an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee. an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee of the tourism enterprises establishments under the services of the City of Manila, as amended.
There is a motion by the majority floor leader to approve for second reading an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee of the tourism enterprises establishments under the services of the City of Manila, as amended. Is, is there any second to the motion? Seconded by Consell Alisustaga Pardo Jr., Consell Alino de la Cruz, Consell Ian Bansehnyebang, Consell Bobby Lim, Consell Marjo Nisidro, Consell Dr. J. Benaventura, Consell Alapulnieto, Consell Alapugoso, Consell Terren Salibarbar, Consell Alamaila Echenza, Consell Tol Sargal, Consell DJ Bagatsin, Consell Attorney Chris Bacani, Consell Thierry Ortega, Consell Bobby Espirito, Consell Elmer Parr. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I manifest that all of the councilors present in today's session be made as principal co-authors of this landmark income generating tax revenue of the DT Cam. One minute recess, Your Honor.
There is, uh, Mr. Secretary, please take note of the manifestation made by the sponsor. One minute recess declared by the chair. Session resume.
I move, Your Honor, that we approve for third and final reading and for publication an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee of the tourism enterprises establishments under the services of the City of Manila.
There is a motion by the majority floor leader to approve for third and final reading an ordinance imposing a tourism certification fee on, of the tourism enterprises establishments under the services of the City of Manila. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, there are no more items to this, to be discussed. I move that we leave the suspension of the rules.
There is a motion to leave the suspension of the rules. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is approved.
Move to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn. Is there any objection? Hearing lang, the motion is adjourned.
Lyceum of the Philippines University, Manila North and South Harbor.